Welcome to the public, I'll say that. And we're like to excuse Chair Moss, at least for a little bit. He has, he's in a legal mediation that he's in and out of. So he may be joining us in and out. His day job is required a little bit of extra time over the last couple of days. So we're excusing him. So but welcome everyone here. And let's go ahead and do a roll call so that we can. Actually, I've got to read. Let me read here. As authorized by Utah Code 52-4, this meeting is being held electronically with an anchor location at the State Board of Education offices, and the public may also attend electronically. Okay, all right. Let's go ahead with a roll call vote. I have, well, I'm just going to read down my list I have here. Board Member Reild, were you able to join us?
Yes.
Okay. Board Member Booth, are you with us? Okay, he's here. Board Member Bogus?
Yes.
Okay, she's present. Board Member Klein? Are you online?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Board Member Davis? Does anyone know if Cindy was here or is she online? Okay, let me just circle that. Okay. Vice Chair Earl is here. Board Member Green? Vice Chair Hart?
Here.
Board Member Carey? Okay, so. Oh, okay, okay. So we may be missing Board Member Carey and Board Member Davis today. Board Member Wood? Board Member Hymus?
Here.
Board Member Lear?
Here.
Board Member Moss is, well, there he is temporarily maybe in and out. So we've got him for a minute. Board Member Norton? Okay, we're not certain. We'll see there. Board Member Straight? Here, I can see him. So, okay, so we have three that are missing. And we'll have Board Member Moss in and out as we can keep him. Hopefully, we'll keep him for a minute. So. And we.
I'm sorry. I should just announce my excuse.
We did.
Oh, you did? I'm sorry. I'm waiting to hear from my media, so.
Okay. Do you, Molly, do you want to take?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm going to turn the time over to Vice Chair Hart as we move into mission, vision. Okay, so Cindy Davis is here.
Hello, Member Davis. And just a point of information, we have the microphones on what's called automatic. So you just click it and talk. Your responsibility, though, is to unclick when you're finished talking because we still, we have to make that space for the next speaker. So, and there's only, you can only keep a few in queue. Our first item of business is Action Item 5.1, USBE Mission and Vision. And do you want to pull up who's driving today so I can? You're driving, Kelsey? Okay. Pull up where we left off? Or why don't we start with? There we go.
We have to review where we're at.
Yeah. So if you'll, yeah, thank you. It's kind of a, we've got a long document. Is there anyone that wants to start out the conversation on mission, vision? I thought I might have a volunteer. Member, sure.
Kristen just saying she's trying to get in.
Okay. Thank you. She's trying to get on the Zoom?
We just did odds and ends, so I don't know.
Okay. We will, we'll keep an eye out for her. She's driving. Okay. So it might be spotty a little bit. Okay. 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 All right. Member Booth, I know you've been working on some things. What have you got for us?
Okay, just over the little lunch break, why don't you go down to like the bottom of that Google Doc? Like the very bottom. It's way down. And you'll find, there you go, those blue things. So Brandon and I were just brainstorming over this little break. We were looking for an abstract phrase that would kind of just be a one-liner. Jenny and I talked a little bit before Brent joined me. And this, I don't know that this is it, but somehow we need a phrase that then, out of which the mission statement of what we are planning to do comes. And then the values, and then our tools that we use as the board to accomplish that, that Jenny and others have provided in the other documents. The mission is basically a lot of what you saw in Jenny's, just kind of rephrased there and not nearly as beautifully presented from a visual standpoint. So, but I couldn't figure out how to make any pretty colored boxes or text boxes over the lunch break. So I'll get a quick course in that. And next time, we'll bring it looking prettier. I don't know if any of those speak to you. Public education for an excellent life, public education for a better life, this is a vision statement, or something likened to that, but just about that long. It wouldn't have to even be that, although I would love to get public education in there. That's my, and then mission, prepare Utah graduates to succeed and lead, preserve our constitutional republic, continue learning, and live meaningful lives. And that could be shortened if any of you wanted to take any of those pieces out. I'm just getting everything in there that different people have put in over the last little bit. And as you go down to the values, I kind of just picked and chose my favorites of the ones that have been in Portrait of Graduate. And this isn't necessarily saying what's going to be in Portrait of Graduate. There are lots of different lists of values. But I loved academic rigor, resilience, communication, service, collaboration, creativity, and accountability. And I forced myself to stick with just seven so I wasn't exceeding what Stephen Covey's cardinal rule of not more than seven. And then the tools, academic standards, information systems, management of taxpayer funds, operations, policy. And then under that, we have the goals. And we've had those four. Who knows what the goals will be as we solidify what we're going to do with the strategic plan and the things we've already gone through. So this is just a jumping off place. I'm not completely married to anything. I was just trying to find something that we could use as a trigger or a springboard for some really good ideas that will hopefully come together quickly so that we can stay on the schedule that our board leadership have so positively put down on our little agenda there. So there you go.
Thank you, Member Booth. We have some other lights. Let's hear some comments and then see if we can meld and come up with something that each one of us can be proud of and can support and can move forward. That's really what we're looking for, right? Something that resonates with us, our common ground, or what lights us up. So that is our, that's what we're looking for. So, Member Davis?
Yeah, thanks. I mean, I like a lot of what I see up here. I think, or maybe I would just switch the mission and the vision. I mean, the mission I have always understood is the quick punch, the less than seven words for easy memory. And then the vision is how you get, how you accomplish that. So the mission would be one of the public education for an excellent life. The vision is how do we get there? We prepare Utah graduates to succeed and lead, la, 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 the things. I might, I could be wrong, but Sarah probably has way more study, Sarah Young, than I, deputy titles. Chief of, Chief Officer, whatever.
She's Chief of Staff.
Chief of Staff, Young, thank you.
So we have the, we have this. We also have some, what's that? Right. So let's, what I'm trying to do is pick up where we left off, which is kind of hard. So can. Oh, okay. Okay. And you were addressing that. Okay. So first, we'll go back to when they presented on the strategic plan. The vision is what we aspire to. And why it matters is we motivate and inspire change from here to there. What we aspire to. Then the mission is what we do and how we do it, or, and why it matters. It's our reason for being and how we serve. So there's a starting point. Chief of Staff Young, do you have any? Did you put this together? Was this yours? So what we're trying to do is we're trying to figure out the mission, vision, which is which, right up there.
Yeah, so traditionally, it's been approached similar to the way you described it, where that vision piece is what is our vision for the overall, like K-12 system? And then in your mission statement, you get more specific about, like, so what is your role within that space? And what are your strategies to be able to achieve that?
So short would be the vision.
So length is subjective in terms of really what you kind of foresee in terms of the board's role. I will say traditionally, these are both shorter statements because they're then followed by the additional components related to then the goals and strategies that, so it's like the umbrella to those folks.
And I think, I think that mission is relatively short. I don't think it's a, it's a paragraph. So, so this is one. We also have on the table, because I believe we ended with a motion. I believe we did. So we need to bring that back to the table. Are you pulling that up? Well, I think, didn't, did you just send it?
Well, it was just some other thoughts.
I can, I can pull them up.
Yeah, that's, and it's just some other, other thoughts, just touching base with a few other board members, just some thoughts, once again, kind of like what Randy did. It's not the actual motion because we already have some things that we've, we've got in motion, but some other considerations. But I think on this consideration, I think the vision and mission, the liquid, like the one is reversed. I don't know if that makes sense. Well, I'll show you when Kelsey pulls it up. But it tried to take some of the same language, both from law as well from others. Once again, it's just a suggestion as we're working on our already stuff that we have in place.
Are these documents on the agenda? Are they in the backup?
Natalie, I did pass those out yesterday, so.
Oh, sorry. I'm talking about the ones that are showing on the screen from Randy and.
I think Randy just sent it in this afternoon.
To the full board? It's on the, it's on the. Yes, it's on the Google Doc. It's just at the bottom. So if you scroll all the way down, you'll see it. Okay. And then here's what was shared. So we're just kind of getting this all back into the, into the collective workspace here. So we've got a mission, which is to open doors of opportunity for Utah children, and a vision of academic and organizational excellence for the Utah public education system. And then.
This just, it's similar formatting, but I think the words vision and mission have to be switched here. I think the vision would be the overarching with the aspiration, right?
Okay, yeah.
Isn't that, and then the mission.
Based on what we just said.
Yeah, based on what we just read. This is just some thoughts. And once again, these are.
Does it fit?
I don't, I actually don't think it does.
Vision is what we aspire to.
Isn't the vision the aspirational? And the mission is the role.
Okay, I would, I would flip it.
But not the actual words, but the, but the vision, the mission word and the vision word would be up here. And the language would stay the same.
Because mission is what we do and how we do it. So that would be what's listed in the box.
Academic and organizational excellence.
I know, I know. So, and I know we're asking for computer gymnastics here, but can you now flip back to the Google Doc? I know, but can you go to the?
The one we had previously?
That Randy just, a member Booth just shared? Okay, yes. So I guess my question is what do we see comparing this vision to the vision in the graphic? What resonates? Where are you at with, is one speaking to you more than others?
Or have you got something that speaks?
Right. That talks louder to you.
The only, just a couple of thoughts on the mission here. And that's, that's why visually on the other one, it was, can you go down now, Kelsey? We're having you. That the outcomes had the things that are listed called participate in civic responsibilities, these things here, the mission being very simple, a mission that has too many pieces, you then have to take all those pieces and apply them to the things that we do. Does, I don't know if that makes sense, where, when it's very simplified, and then we have, these are the things that we do, this is how we're going to do it. In this case, on the values end of it, we actually are saying that we're serving families and students and LEAs, it's a system accountability, or whatever we want there. That's infused through it. So anyway, just some thoughts. I, there would, I, once again, this is just thoughts. This isn't where we ended with our motions. These are just some additional things to consider.
Okay, so you've said motions, so now you've got yourself in that space. Now I think we need to pull up the motions so that we know, and I think then we'll be up to speed where we left off. So, and while you, while you do that, Member Hymus?
Just wondering, sorry. Is there a motion on the floor right now?
Well, I, there is.
Potentially, there could be.
Potentially, yes.
I just, I, well, I'll just wait for that.
Yeah, that's what she's pulling up now. But we wanted to set the stage and get you thinking kind of in that space. It's hard to, it's hard to do in a, in a group where we need to be together as a, in open meeting, trying to do this. This is easier done in smaller groups, just back and forth.
So I think we, we started with the vision and said we need to go to the mission. I think that's where we ended up because we started there and had, we added some other things, possibilities to the, that circle part. And then it was decided, there was a motion to go to the mission and start working there. And Board Member Bogus, at some point, had asked us to make sure we vote on each thing individually, so we were getting a, an individual vote. That, that was voted on and accepted. And then I think that, we didn't really, we just still had it all out there.
Right, right.
So we were on the mission. I'm not sure exactly where, I can't remember exactly where we landed on that.
This was what we were considering, and then Member Bogus's motion to divide, to consider each bullet point separate, well, the mission and then the bullet point separately passed, from what I can.
So we were, I think we were discussing mission at that point. But I don't know if there was a.
Yes.
Yeah.
And we need to decide on these individual items is what I thought we left off with.
Hi.
Oh, yeah, sorry, Kelsey.
I have no idea.
From what the motions document said from our special session on July 31st, we, a motion was introduced to adopt the currently highlighted mission that is bolded and underlined with these bullet points attached to them. Member Bogus made a motion to divide, which passed. So we would consider just the bolded, underlined mission language, vote that up or down, and then consider the bullet points, vote those up or down, if I am remembering and reading correctly.
And that's where I thought we were, but.
I think each bullet point is also considered individually.
Yes, and we do them individually, is how I, or others, right. And I believe, Member Norton, you have your hand up.
I'm scrolling to the bottom, and that's, oh, there it is.
Board Member Klein, I think you're, you're unmuted. I believe it's you.
And did we lose, did we lose Member Norton? Okay, so let's, oh, here she is.
I'm getting unmuted. I just have some words missing, but I don't think this is the appropriate time. So at some point, you know, I do have a, some, a little bit different language, but I, it's not, it's more granular.
Okay, tell me, is it to vision or is it to mission?
It's to kind of using, using the chart that we had handed to us yesterday, it is over in the circle.
Okay. So, yes.
When you get there, we can do that.
It's kind of the vision, yes. All right, so without further, what's that?
I have a recommendation.
Yeah, well, I believe we have, yep, go for it.
Cindy, were you in?
Go ahead, I was just.
Okay, I was just gonna, I would make a motion that we make, that the vision, sorry, mission be academic and organizational excellence. I guess we can add Utah public school system. It seems to be wordy to me instead of simplified. Maybe we can have a discussion about that. But that's what I would add, is just that academic and organizational excellence over the top of the items that we affect or impact, so. That would be the mission. That's where we're at, the mission. And then if. Excellence, yeah. It says vision on here, but it, if, keep in mind, I think the wording is flipped. I know Cindy's thinking that's not the case. Okay.
All right, so we got a motion in a second. Oh. Y'all, y'all don't do that. Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
It has to do with our definitions. If we're defining the aspirational as the vision, am I wrong?
That's what it is, aspiration, but it's just a concept, an abstract concept or idea.
That's the overarching.
I see, I see.
But we're, yes, but we're talking about the mission.
So scroll down, we've already decided on a vision, haven't we?
No. Yes.
I thought that it said. Okay, we never finalized it, all right.
That's right.
We voted to move on, all right. I already have it, okay. Go ahead, Member Chair Moss.
All right, maybe this is just a suggestion, maybe it's an amendment. There's so much good stuff in here. I look at what was in this document of vision, and it talks about how students will have the knowledge and skills to blah, blah, blah. That sounds like a vision. I'm wondering, there's also two different missions that have been proposed, and I'm curious if there's any way to combine those. I personally, what resumes with, what resonates with me is academic and organizational excellence that opens doors of opportunity for all Utah children. I don't know if I'm just trying to combine, you know, two things that don't match, but to me, that is our mission. I mean, that, that's inspirational to me, to open doors of opportunity for all Utah children. I think this kind of captures what this organization does. We, you know, academic and organizational excellence is what we're about here, which opens doors for all Utah children. I'm just going to throw it out there. If it doesn't go anywhere, I'm fine.
You wanted doors of opportunity, is that what I heard you say?
Yeah, doors of, whatever this was, to, that opens doors of opportunity for, for all Utah children. Again, I'm just looking at good ideas. Yes, yeah, that opens doors of opportunity for all Utah children. I think wherever this language come from, came from, that's here is what I'm pulling from, and it says doors of opportunity for Utah children. We might say all Utah children because I think we're inclusive and we want to serve every kid wherever they are.
If Utah children suggests we're leaving people, kids out, can you just say Utah children? That means.
Oh, I would assume it means children that are in Utah, not necessarily children that are from Utah. I mean, our, our job is to serve Utah children, right? Wherever they.
That's what I'm saying.
Does that sound exclusive, you're saying?
No, I'm saying that, it is, Utah children is inclusive.
Doors of opportunity for Utah children, or all Utah, I don't know. That to me combines an organizational statement of what we do with the aspiration that that is what we're doing, is we're opening doors of opportunity. So I'll just throw it out there.
Member Davis, I think you have an idea.
I think all Utah children is a statement of inclusivity that is important.
I like all.
And so I would like all, frankly.
But.
Whoever you are, we're here for you, and how we do that is through academic and organizational excellence, right? So.
Okay, thank you. Member Hymus?
Sorry, was this a motion by Member Moss? Was something? Let's make a motion to a man, why not? I'll just throw it out there. Do I need that? Can I, can I do a motion and get a second, or? Was there a second on the first motion? Oh, all right, so.
Just make it a motion.
Make it a motion.
That's, that's my motion.
Is there a second?
Maybe not.
There's.
It dies a sad, lonely death.
Okay, so we're back.
It's okay.
Okay, hush.
Put some other things together.
Okay, Hymus?
Thank you. I don't know how to move to adopt this paper here. So I, my motion is to, to have the mission read to open doors of opportunity to Utah children, and I'll speak to it if I get a second.
Is there a second?
Second.
We noticed that it's not a complete sentence. The chair notices. All right, all right, we have a motion in a second.
We can, we can.
For a sentence fragment to be, that the mission statement be open doors of opportunity for. Two open, oh, even better, we started with a proposition. Okay. Two open doors of opportunity for all Utah children.
Here's, thank you.
Yeah, you can speak to your fragment.
My fragmented, again, when we first started this, there was, there was an exercise that Jim, that Chair Moss did, and remember, he pulled up very well-known companies throughout the world, and I've just pulled up two of them. Remember Coca-Cola? The mission starts with to refresh the world. Oh my, how dare them start, dare they start with two.
They are not an education agency.
That, it says mission. What is Coca-Cola's mission statement? To refresh the world. Nike, our mission is to bring inspiration and innovation to every athlete. They are short, concise, and they are doing something. That's the point, I believe, that Member Davis was trying to make. That's, that's what I've understood a mission to be. The two of us could be wrong. I mean, you, you notice that we talked together, then she seconded a motion that she would have made and I would have seconded, so we could be in left field, but that's where our thoughts are.
But you're together in left field, and that's beautiful.
And I appreciate this one here that is short and concise and is grammatically incorrect.
Thank you. Member Bogus?
So I would speak against the motion. I think we have, it sounds great, it's very ethereal, but it's not the proper role of government, and we are a government agency. And, well, our agency enacts the missions of the board. So I think we need to consider, what does our agency do? We're charged with. We're charged with control and supervision. We're not charged with opening doors of opportunity. We actually have a constitutional charge, and that's not it. So, thank you.
All right.
And I have, like to speak...
Yes, Member Norton, thank you.
And I would like to speak in favor of it. You lost me?
No, well, just hold the microphone closer to your mouth.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, yes ma'am.
Okay, I would like to speak in favor of this motion, as I feel that the doors of opportunity are education. And if it makes you feel, we could say the mission of the State Board of Education is to open doors of opportunity for all Utah children. But, we don't need that, the short statement's great.
Okay. I know someone's gonna, are you clicking? Oh, I'm sorry, you're, Member Lear.
I, I, I like this better, and I, I've missed, I think I missed the last meeting, but, I, I like this better, but I'm not persuaded by Nike and Coca-Cola goals, I'm not a business, I, this is, I've been saying for 50 years, education's not a business, and I don't want it to have business-like missions or visions. So, I do like to open doors of opportunity, it's, at least it's non-business. So, I, I, of course, would prefer something with equity in it, something like that.
How did you turn your mic off? Oh, did, okay, will you... Okay, will you just please click your button again? Okay, well, Member Moss is going off. Okay.
I wonder if it's, because we don't actually open, kids have to open the doors, so, we create opportunities, we, yeah, create conditions or whatever that allow students to open doors. I just, something to keep in mind there, and I think that might speak a little bit to what Board Member Bogus is saying, that we don't, we don't do that for kids, they have to do it for themselves, but the, it is education that allows that to happen, so we either create, we provide, we, what was, what were you saying? Create conditions, something like that, create conditions of opportunity for Utah children, I don't know, something to think about there.
Is that a motion or an amendment?
Do you like education, educational opportunity?
Tell me, we've got a second. Oh, I thought we were answering. Okay, I will make sure that they use their mics, my, I will do that. Member Moss?
I will be quick. No, I like this, I think we open the doors, students have to walk through them, I mean, there's a lot of legitimate debate about the function of government, I mean, what we do is we build schools, we hire teachers, we set standards, districts do curriculum, teachers do lesson plans, we do things, and I think that is opening of a door, and the kids have to choose to walk through it. So, I'm not conflicted about whether this states an inaccurate role for government. I think somewhere in this, in the one that went around yesterday, well, at some point, let's see, this one had elements of the mission of how we do it, and somewhere, I think their academic excellence is, is how we open doors, but, I like this, I just speak in favor of it as, an inspirational, aspirational description of what we try to do for kids, and so is that top-line statement, I like it, and then I think, you know, we fleshed it out a little bit with, you know, how we do that, which includes academic excellence and policy and the other stuff, so, I like it as a, as a top-line statement of what we're about.
So, for my clarity and clarity of anyone following along, this is what we are proposing as a mission. The mission is to open doors of opportunity for all Utah children.
But then we have bullet points to debate, still.
Right, but, I...
There might be other elements to this, but I think this has been proposed as the top-line, kind of lead, right?
Okay, gotcha. Okay, and Member Davis?
I didn't actually come up with that wording, but, I'll tell you where the idea stemmed. We were in primary children's hospital doing our service project, and I saw the mission on the elevator, and it was also not grammatically correct, but, it was short enough to remember, and I still remembered it several days later, and I was like, man, I wish we had something like that, and it was literally, their mission was, children first and always. That's it. And I thought, why aren't, why can't we have something that is easy to remember like that? Like, every single thing that I do as a board member, whether it's working on academic standards, or oversight and compliance, it's all in hopes that our children of Utah have doors open to them in the future. It's, that's why I'm here, period. So, I, I guess we don't have to use that language, we could use different language, but, I just want a little background of where that stemmed from, and yes, I ended a sentence with a preposition also, sorry, Carol.
Member Straight?
Yes, I, I don't think mission statements are proprietary, right? Anyway...
We are not going to steal theirs. I dropped the line.
It is beautiful.
It is.
I mean, it is very beautiful. Anyway, thank you.
Yes, yes. Any other comments? Following, following the Roberts rules?
I...
Oh, okay, thank you, Member Klein, go ahead.
Yes, sorry, I just have one to put forward myself, is this a good time to do that, or are we voting on each of these individually?
Well...
It looks like we've got several on the table, can I add another one?
You can, um, yes, you can do a substitute motion if you would like. We are trying to stick to some sort of order, but, it's also a, it's kind of, it's hard because we're trying to do an organic process, but, do it in an orderly fashion, so, go for it, please propose what you have.
Okay, so, I would propose for it to read, to provide traditional academic foundations to students who, with their families, are free to create their own opportunities.
Oh, sorry, can, can you read it all the way once, and then read it slow so that we can get it into the, into, typed into the document?
Yes.
Okay, go for it.
So, to provide traditional academic foundations to students who, with their families, are free to create their own opportunities. And I'll read it slower now, to provide...
Got it.
Traditional academic foundations.
Yep.
Students...
Yep.
Who, with their families, are free to create their own opportunities.
Thank you. Full sentence with punctuation noted. Impressive. Do we have a second for that? Okay, we have a second from Member Bogus. Comments? Thoughts? Would you like to speak to it? Go ahead.
Sure. I just think that as, as a system, it's our job to provide those academic foundational skills and knowledge, a place where they can access and find opportunities according to their desire to, to make something of themselves. I think the more students and families have the freedom to choose those opportunities and are free from the compulsory nature of it, the more, I think, our students will thrive and love learning. The more compulsory it is, the more it tends to dam, put a damper on that, that natural desire to learn and grow and thrive and, and succeed. So, when it comes from the student, from the families, and they feel free to chart their own course, I think we will see greater success. Our job is simply to provide those resources for them, so that they can take advantage of them.
Excellent, thank you. So, I do see the, the, I see an idea that's, that seems to be, throughout them, we're talking about the opportunities and opportunities being available. Member Norton, you have your hand up?
I'm sorry, it's down, coming down.
Okay, all right, all right. Any other comments? Yeah, sure.
So, I seconded this motion, and I do like it better than the other one, but I still think we're not in the framework of the USBE as, whether it be the body or the agency, we are not the ones doing that work. That, that's very local. Academic foundations is, and like I said, I like this better than the other one, I want to be very clear about that, however, academic foundations is really, that's like classroom-level stuff. That's, we're, we're a state-level agency, elected body, are we doing the work of academic foundations in this room?
So, do you have a amendment? Do you, how do you want to change to, what are your, what are you suggesting?
I just think we're headed down the, my suggestion is we go down a different path, because I think this is absolutely catastrophically the wrong path to go down. We are not charged with academic foundations, we're charged with control and supervision.
Okay, so, all right, so, let's stay together on this, please. So, the substitute motion that's been made and seconded, let's go to no comment, oh, you have, okay, Member Wood?
I am just wondering how we, you know, we've been charged with the OLEG audit to align ourselves legislatively, and when I look at the mission and vision in the legislate, in the code, that too is, is more along the line of the greater vision of the system. It says to create the, to assure the best, oh, sorry, my computer keeps scrolling, to assure Utah the best educated citizenry in the world. I mean, if that's not as big, as broad as you can get, so I think we need, we, yeah, can find a balance of aspirational, if we're, we've been charged to align, so obviously, they're looking at what is the big system goal, and we have that general control and supervision over that system, so I think we need to think about that bigger perspective.
Okay, all right, I see no other comments, so let's, oh, yeah, you can, I'm sorry.
And I would agree with that same thing, I do think we need a aspirational that is uplifting and, you know, but then to speak to Member Bogus is, I think that's, as we move from that down to the next level, we're, this is, this is who we are, this is what we do, this is how we do it, kind of a thing, and it should speak to those very same things, but I think there is that, you know, catchy, so to speak, that just has a positive direction.
I have, I have an edit for mine, if that's okay?
Okay, go for it.
Based on this feedback, I would read, to create the conditions that allow teachers to provide traditional academic foundations to students who, with their families, are free to create their own opportunities. Or you could say educators allow educators.
Okay, all right, do we have any, any comments? You seconded that, so I, the, it still stands, I heard you say you like it. I'm sorry, yes, you are right, but, we got it. All right, I see no other comments, so we are gonna move to a vote on a, on the substitute motion. All in favor? The underlying, this is a substitute. Right, correct, and, but this is a substitute, not an amendment. I don't have one of those sheets today. Do you have another one? Oh, right here. All right, Member Bogus? Member Booth? Member Klein?
Yes.
Member Davis?
No.
Vice Chair Earl? Member Green? Member Hymus?
No.
Member Carrie has not joined us online yet, I don't believe. Member Lear? Member Norton?
No.
Member Reel?
No.
Member Straight?
No.
Member Wood?
No.
Member Moss?
No.
Too many words for me. What is it? Ten opposed, three in favor, that motion fails to carry. Let's go back to the original motion.
And then, I think Brent has one?
Okay, just to bring us back to the same place, that the board approved the following mission statement, to open doors of opportunity for all Utah children. Member Straight?
So, I guess I, I hear what Board Member Wood is saying, and what Vice Chair, I just went blank. Anyway, I found this quote that really kind of ties in with this doors theme, and it's a quote by George Washington Carver, who was born a slave and, and actually started a university. Anyway, "Education is the key that unlocks the golden door to freedom." So, if we're trying to find that, that key idea that really puts us in alignment, I think maybe that helps, I don't know how to do that, I don't know if it's put above the vision, because I like the vision as presented here, it's the same theme, but anyway, I just found that quote and thought it was, it gave that broader world competitive theme to it.
Okay. All right, Member Davis?
Can I just jump in for a second? Can you just read the votes from the last, from the last motion, and, and the ones going forward, so that the public listening can hear who voted?
Are you not able to hear the votes?
Well, I know there are people listening online that couldn't tell who voted for that last one, who didn't.
Thanks, Member Klein. The last vote was ten in, ten opposed, three in favor, the three in favor were Bogus, Klein, and Green.
Thank you.
Yes.
Chair Hart, I have a motion to substitute.
Hold on, I lost my place.
I was called on.
Yeah, I, I called her before she did a point of order, yeah.
And I'm not something or anything, so...
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I just want to speak to the motion.
Sure.
I, I like the language, I like the shortness of it, but, I can also really appreciate what Member Bogus is saying, and I think it's something that we've had to grapple with, and I think it's something that could change as these potential convenings happen in the future with the legislature and the governor's office and everybody, because we really are, and have in the past, and the legislature in code also, it's like, there's this kind of like back-and-forthing between the, the vision and the mission, for the system-wide state of education, and then also for us as a board or agency, and, and there's kind of this, been a bit of conflating across all, all of the parts, so, I hear this too, and I just don't know how to resolve that, other than to move forward the best way that I feel like we can now, and then understanding, this all may actually change after those potential convenings happen. And I also do like the language of creating conditions, that Member Klein imposed, so, I, I don't know if that is put somewhere down in the vision, you know, creating conditions for academic and organizational excellence for the Utah Public Education System, because that speaks more towards, the vision is to do this.
Can you repeat what you just said?
Yes, it would come in the vision part, but I think we're only voting on the mission right now, but it was, it would be creating conditions for academic and organizational excellence for the Utah Public Education System. for the Utah public education system.
Okay.
I just wanted to acknowledge the sort of quandary that all of us have dealt with historically, and still kind of are grappling with now.
Right. I think, I think those comments are spot on. Member Bogus, your light's on.
Yes, ma'am. So I would make a motion to substitute based on inspiration from Mr. Straight over there. I would move that the board approve the following mission statement. If we're going in this realm, that we educate for freedom, end quote.
Hold on just a minute, Member Bogus. Okay. Say that again.
Oh, whoever is doing that, Elise is doing a great job printing every word. Just, quote, educate for freedom, end quote.
So not that we?
Yeah, not that we. Yeah, capital E on educate, capital F on freedom, and our mission state would be, quote, educate for freedom. Yeah. And if I have a second, then I'll speak to the motion.
Do we have a second? Member Green has seconded. Okay.
So, I just really, like, I really liked what Member Straight said, and could you read that quotation again, Member Straight, as part of me speaking to my motion? We'll just pretend I'm speaking. Oh, okay. Well. It, it was very much so. It was just very inspiring, and I think if this is the direction that, that the board wants to head, I, I like, you know, it's simple, it's, there's an implied we, there's an implied subject there, so it technically is a complete sentence. The quote that, that Member Straight gave was "Education is the key that unlocks the golden door to freedom," by George Washington Carver. And, and so with that as inspiration, I would move the following language, short, sweet, and inspirational.
Okay, thank you. Member Green?
Well, Member Straight, you just started something kind of cool here, because while she came up with that, I was on Google looking at other quotes. And, I mean, I've got over 150 quotes right now from founding fathers that align with just education, character, justice, the building of, of a quality life for, for people, which I think is the foundation of everything we know and, and believe, and I think that we continue to foster and hope for, for the future generations. So I think this has some potential.
Are you adding something to this, or are you speaking in favor?
I'm speaking in favor.
Okay. Are there any other comments before we, Member Davis?
Yeah. I, I like this too. I, I like the other one better, simply because I think we educate for a lot of things, and freedom is one of them. But I really do like this too.
Which other one were you referring to?
The main motion on the table, which is to open doors of opportunity for all Utah children.
Okay. All right, so.
I have.
You have, okay. Now, we are landing this plane in nine minutes. So, speak now.
Okay.
And speak quickly.
I mean, it's kind of combining the two, and I actually came up with something too, but I, I just, I didn't continue with it, off of your, your thing, but, and what if it's educate for opportunities, something, the combination of the two. I'm just throwing it out there, see if it fills like anything. Because it is that, we're educating for opportunities, but.
All right.
Throwing that out there, not hearing anything, so, okay.
Okay. I don't think it's a motion. I think it's an idea, and if somebody wanted to. It was a, yeah, it was a floated idea. Right. I understand. Okay. I think that fish died. So, we are back to, the board approved the following mission statement, educate for freedom. Let's vote. Member, Chair Moss?
I'm a no. I like it, but no.
Wood?
Yes.
Member Straight? I'll come, I'll come back to you. Member Reel?
No.
Member Norton?
No.
Member Lear? Member Carey? Member Hymus?
No.
Member Green? Member Earl? Member Davis?
No.
Member Klein?
Yes.
Member Booth? Member Bogus? Member Straight? Member Straight?
What's the vote at?
Your vote counts.
Seven yes or something like that. Okay. I'm a no.
You're off the hook. We're back to the original motion. The vote, yes, I need to read that into record. I know, but I'm buying you some more time. Let's go. Your mic is not on. Please turn your mic on.
I'm gonna go no for now.
Okay. Thank you. That makes it.
Can you speak?
I am, I am. Hold on. That's nine no's, five yeses. The five yeses are Bogus, Klein, Earl, Green, and Wood. We're back to the original. Let's go ahead and take a vote on the original, so we know where we're at with that one. Unless. I got you. I got you. We can do whatever we need to do. I am not trying to rush you. In the words of a very, very wise man, slow is smooth and smooth is fast. All right. Give you enough thinking time?
So, can I take a point of personal privilege?
You can.
That has actually made its way into the educational sphere. Almost every conversation I have, Superintendent Jones is quoted.
And as he should be.
He should be, because it's, it's this, slow is smooth, smooth is fast, and anyhow, so cheers to Superintendent Jones.
Yes. And is the juice worth the squeeze? All right. So, we are back, we are back to the original motion. I'd like to, for us to consider this, to kind of figure out where we're at with this. To open doors of opportunity for all Utah children. Okay? Let's go ahead and vote on this. Unless somebody wants to be, this to be a jumping-off point, can you see where we could marry the idea?
I'm not really marrying anything. I'm marinating. I have an idea, not an idea, but I would, instead of the, to open doors, I'm just, I'm making a suggestion. We'll see if someone.
Right.
Creating conditions of opportunity for all children. But we can open doors, but, because we really create the conditions for that. But anyways, throwing that out there.
I guess theoretically, my thing is, opening doors is creating conditions. It's just a more metaphorical way of saying it. That's just.
Did I get a second or not?
Um, no.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
No. I'm just saying, I, I think there's, we've got to preserve some catchiness, some, and, and to be absolutely correct, we're not exactly opening doors, we're kind of creating conditions to open doors, and doors are metaphorical, but it, there's, if there's no catchiness or cleverness to it, we don't have any chance of it being, and this is, this is pretty bland. So, I think that, and to add more words is, I think, just.
Do you want to keep your motion out there? Okay. But we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna vote on the original, please. Yes.
Is it all right?
Chair, it was just fine.
Okay. So, Frederick Douglass, when he learned to read, he said in his autobiography that at that moment, he was no longer satisfied to be a slave. So going back to the idea we had before, because I, I did like that idea, that education even today leads to greater freedom, leads to, and another word for freedom is opportunity. And maybe this isn't better, but to open doors of freedom for all Utah children, it makes a little more vague in its educational reference, I think, and so I'm a little worried about that. But that idea, that education makes us free, is very powerful for me. Anyway. In the what?
Okay, so we can't talk off mic, so I hear you. Thank you for the, the comment. We are back to our vote.
I thought he made a motion.
Is that a motion, or a? Okay.
Well, it caught mine, so if you make the motion, I'll second it.
I think you gotta speak in your mic, though.
I meant to not.
Okay, stop. You can't have those conversations off mic. You can't do that. We are gonna move forward on a vote. Yes, we can. We'll go back to the drawing board. Did I start with, okay, Member Bogus? We're voting on. The main motion.
Yeah, I would go back to, that is not the proper role of government, so no.
No? Okay. Member Booth? Member Klein? And please speak into your mic, so people can hear.
No.
Member Davis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Earl?
I'm gonna say yes. I, Carol kind of convinced me here. We do have a metaphor, a visual we're, we're working with.
Member Green?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Member Hymus?
Yes.
Member Care, uh, Member Lear?
Yes.
Member Norton?
Yes.
Member Reel?
Yes.
Member Straight? Member Wood?
Yes.
Member Moss? Okay. Dwell in favor, two opposed. The two opposed would be Bogus and Klein. I'm proud of this bunch. I'm proud of you, because you came to a conclusion, you considered everybody's feedback, you looked for the place that everybody converged. We didn't go all the way down the, the commercialized road, but we did include a metaphor that, that people can picture, and we laid a foundation for important values. We opened the door to include things that matter to us later, so congratulations. Good job. Next up.
Okay, I think we gotta go to the, the vision. Am I using the terms correctly?
And the vision is, no. I, I really think that was the vision, and then what we do and how we do it.
Point of order.
Yeah?
We're supposed to be 40 minutes ago, starting a data performance measures presentation?
Yeah, and, yeah, that's. We're adjusting on the fly.
Okay, so just so we can adjust every day on the fly?
Yeah. We have every meeting so far.
I understand that, but as we continue to have these conversations, I'm gonna continue to hold you to a set standard. So as long as we're being flexible, we're always flexible.
Well, we're flexible today. So.
Well, we were eight o'clock, 10 o'clock flexible last night, so.
You speak to your mic and turn it on.
So, I, I think as we've framed it up, there have been proposals for bullet points or sub items under the mission, right, and also under the vision. I guess maybe just a question for the body. We've, we've framed the top-line mission statement. That was the mission statement, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Not the vision, okay. And, and one question is, do we want to try to frame in the top-line vision statement, and then come back to the bullet points? I mean, to Member Bogus' point, we do have a presentation on performance measures that's important. Chief of Staff Young is prepared. That leads us to our next step, as we talk about goals, and we get specific. And so I think it's important that we hear from her, and we want to get there. We probably have time for maybe one more item, and do we want to try to frame in the top-line vision statement, then come back to the bullet points? Do we want to look at the elements of the mission statement? I'm just throwing it out there. I think the bodies had some good interaction here. Those are a couple of options we have to try to finish some work today, and then come back the next time. What's the most urgent thing to try to finish today before we go into the performance measures, and then bring it back?
Chair Moss, I have a motion.
Thank you. Hold, hold on. We had Member Hymus, and then Member Klein.
Just, just my two cents. I, I think if, if we're willing and have time, I'd love to tackle the top-line vision statement, and then go to the bullets.
Thank you. Member Klein?
Yes, I just have a motion with that.
Okay.
It would, would be foster freedom through foundational academic.
Foster freedom through foundational?
Foundational academics.
Academics.
Yep.
The alliteration is nice. I thought you were gonna say academic excellence, but you went with the alliteration. Yeah, foster freedom, yeah. All right, do we have a second on that?
So this is, just let me be.
This would be a vision.
This is what, we've got our aspirational. Now we have, am I doing this right? I know what it says there, but we're not doing that.
Oh, okay. We've decided to go away from that. Okay.
That's what I think. Am I right in saying that?
Do we have a second? Member Green is a second.
Because this is now what the, this is the more the meat of what we're responsible for. Am I saying this right?
This is the flighty one. The other one's supposed to be those.
That's why I was telling you.
That's what I was saying, and that's, that's why I said I think we've got the term, like what we just passed should have been the vision.
We can add first at the end.
Can I read this? We have a mixing of definitions.
Member Davis?
I don't know. I mean, Google font of all knowledge. I'm just reading. This is like the three parts of a mission statement, but the mission statement says, the purpose, an explanation of the organization's reason for existing, to open doors of opportunity, then vision, a description of what the organization wants to achieve in the future, to create conditions for academic and organizational excellence. And then it says, values, a list of the core values that guide the organization's behavior and decisions. This is, I don't. The first, the purpose, an explanation of the organization's reason for existing. This has three parts of a mission. Three parts of the, the whole, this would sort of be considered the whole mission statement, I guess. The purpose, an explanation of the organization's reason for existing, vision, colon, a description of what the organization wants to achieve in the future, and values, a list of the core values that guide the organization's behavior and decisions. But maybe you could Google, click on 10 different sites, and they would say different definitions for the mission and the vision, and how that should roll out.
So we just have to decide what ours is gonna be. I, from what I understood from our discussion earlier, and that's why I kept arguing, which, which way is it, which way is it? We just did aspirational and we titled it mission. Am I correct in saying that?
Well, no, I mean, I don't know. There's examples here, and Jim gave us lots of examples. This is Tesla's mission is to accelerate the world's transition to renewable energy. It's usually like a two statement. To, and quick and short, so you can remember it.
So what we're gonna do is we're gonna go with that as the mission. Then we're gonna, we're just gonna decide. That's what we consider the aspirational. Now let's consider the, what'd you call it? The... Well, we did the flighty. Now we need to do the...
Meat.
Meat.
That's, it depends on where you're reading the definition from, and I think that's why we're trying to get on the same page.
What I'm saying is we cre-
Can I throw one more wrench in?
And this says for whom, also.
Can I throw one more wrench in? Sometimes you'll see...
There is a motion on the floor.
Sometimes you'll see mission and vision and it will just have everything.
Member Klein, it is still on the floor. The question is not, it's not being debated, the, the content. Right now, what, what we're trying to clarify is, what is it that we're doing next? Is it, is it a mission? Is it vision? I'm somewhat concerned that we're hung up on that. And rather than think about the label, let's get to the idea. So our idea that we passed, which I've already forgotten, was, that was to open doors. That's aspirational. And it says who? Utah's, all of Utah's children. So we're there. Now, the other one, regardless of what we name it, needs to be the meat. And what Member Klein has put on the floor is, sorry, I can't see the per-. Foster freedom through foundational academics first. So let's stop worrying about whether it's a mission or vision. Let's just get the content down. Okay, this is... Go ahead.
The one flows together.
Correct.
The opportunities, uh, open doors of opportunity for children. And you could, I mean, if you were to extend it as a full sentence, it could be by fostering freedom through foundational academics first. So it's completion of, they flow one from the other.
They do.
And then you can get into the more detailed bullet points after that.
And you can get into the, into the values as well. So it does have a flow to it, regardless of mission, vision. So this is, this is... It's on the floor. It's been seconded. Any comments?
I have a motion to amend.
A motion to amend.
I'd like to amend by just changing the end from foster freedom through academic and organizational excellence for the Utah Public Education System.
Okay, we now have an amendment. Do we have a second to that amendment? The, a second from Member Green. Booth. Booth Green.
Oh.
All right. The, the amendment on the floor is...
Foster freedom through academic and organizational excellence for the Utah Public Education System.
I would like to comment.
Okay, hold on. We got a motion and a second. We're just waiting for it to get typed. All right? Is that accurate? Okay, would you like to speak to your motion?
I love the introduction to the freedom. I, I thought about, you know, Member Bogus. I think that ultimately, that's what we want. The freedom for them to be able to go and do, whether it's service, work, college, whatever. I love that. But I think we come back to what our role is. And our role is that academic and organizational excellence.
I'm, I'm impressed how that blends some multiple ideas. Thank you. Member Lear? And then Bogus?
Would you, I, I don't mind this. First of all, I, I'm wrestling with the organizational word because it feels too, too functional, too businesslike. So I'm not crazy about that word. Maybe not a deal killer. But would you accept just in, for the, in, in the interest of streamlining, for Utah Public Education? So get rid of the and system, so it doesn't sound so clunky. So maybe somebody can help me with figure out organizational through academic? Because I realize we've got some organizational responsibilities as the board. It just feels so, I don't know. Uninspired.
I, yeah. So we have...
I've had my, I had the same question.
Yes, what we have is Bogus, then Klein, and then Reel. Your light's not on.
Can I just conclude my statement with my ponderings? With, what even does organizational excellence mean? Does it mean we do good PowerPoints? Does it mean we have good organizational charts? Does it mean we, we clearly don't treat our staff as well as we should? So not doing that as well.
Member Bogus?
So actually, Member Lear actually asked my question, but I'm wondering if, if we're gonna put this in here. I understand academic excellence. I think it could be better defined, but if we're gonna pass this, I think we need a rubric for organizational excellence. Because it's, it's just ill-defined. It's like this, like thing, and I, I don't, I don't know. And I know, Jenny, you're pointing to this, but that's actually not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about like, fodder, organizational excellence. What, what that looks like and how that infrastructure ebbs and flows together to produce what we want it to produce. I, I don't know, I just...
Whoa? Let's get some more comments. I didn't, I failed to notice the people online and they've been waiting. So hold on, we'll come back to you. Member Klein?
I can amend the amendment.
You can, hold on. I just wanted a few more comments first. You're in line for that.
Okay.
So foundational is super important, as is the word first, because it provides that laser focus. It, it anchors us in, in academics, not a broad, somewhat broad interpretation of academic excellence, which could mean anything to anyone. But if we focus on foundational academics first, that's, that's key for what happens beyond us being on what we do. Organizational excellence is an entirely different beast. But I think the ultimate goal of the public education system should be to focus, laser focus, on foundational academics first. So I would speak against taking out the words foundational and first so that we don't lose that focus to some broad ambiguous interpretation of academic excellence.
Okay. Member Reel, you're, you're good?
Yeah, I'm, I'm good. I had the same comment as Member Bogus and Member Lear. I have a hard time defining what organizational excellence is. However, I, I do think there is a way, and I see clear definition of academic excellence, but organizational doesn't work for me.
Okay, and now we're back to Bogus. You had an amendment? Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay, thanks. The organizational excellence comes, will come in the pillars that are below. They come with management of taxpayer funds, the information systems that we work on, the policy we create, the internal operations, all of our fiscal management and oversight. I mean, we do so much here for organizational excellence. Academic standards is the center pillar and it's the first listed in the vision. It should take the place of predominance. But we have both, and I'll quickly say, not to bring religion into this, but I was reading the BYU magazine the other day and the president of the magazine was saying, "We have room for a spiritual focus in addition to our main academic existence and drivers." And they have room for both. And we here have room and must have room for both because we in fact do much of both.
Okay. You do. Sorry, I, your light doesn't come on. So go ahead.
I want to kick it off. And we're still holding for Bogus to make her amendment, but I would argue the same thing, that organization, we start, we start from the aspirational. Now we're down to where the meat of what happens and what we're responsible for. So we're getting back to that. So I do think organization speaks to that. It's gotta be academic and organizational because we are now, that, those expectations of excellence are there. And then it, the reason why I'm pointing to that is because I think this has to be part of the vision. We just haven't, or the, whatever we want to call it, that we just haven't voted on those components yet, but those are the things we do. I think it has to be, it's part of that. So anyways, okay.
Thank you. Member Bogus, you've waited patiently. You've got an amendment?
Yes, I would, I would move to amend the amendment by having it state that we foster freedom through foundational academics in Utah Public Education.
Okay, I, I was following, but then I think you, so you added foundational academics. So there should be an S on academics. And then you dropped organizational excellence? Did I hear you drop that?
To foster freedom through foundational... Can we get, go back in? Because it's a hybrid. So I need to see Natalie's again, please. To foster freedom through foundational academics in Utah Public Education.
All right, do we have a second on that?
I will second if we can add first back in there.
That's not in the motion, but we gotta, we gotta...
Got a friendly amendment?
Well, we got a second from Member Green. So do you want it in there or do you not? No. Okay, so the original mo, the motion that Member Bogus made is to amend the statement to foster freedom through foundational academics in Utah Public Education. Let's vote. Member Wood?
Just push it. Oh, all right, we gotta take people off.
No.
Member Straight?
No.
Member Reel?
No.
Member Norton?
No.
Member Lear? Member Hymus?
No.
Member Green? Member Earl? Member Davis?
No.
Member Klein?
Yes.
Member Booth?
No.
Member Bogus?
Yes.
That's 10 noes. Three yays. The yays are Klein, Green, and Bogus. Okay, we are going to end in two minutes. We are gonna go back to the motion that we had. Okay, hold, hold on. So that did not pass. So what we're back to is Member Wood's motion to amend, correct? All right, I just want to make sure we're not losing our place. Foster freedom through academic and organizational excellence for Utah Public Education. Member Straight?
So I think where we're getting stuck a little bit is on that word organizational. I'd like to go back to our constitutional mandate of general support and supervision. I'm not sure, and I've come up with several different words. I thought about using that phraseology in some way, but it's a little awkward right now. We could go with administrative excellence, but then I worry about that...
That's a contradiction in terms.
Stop. Enough editorial.
So, but support and supervision, so academic support and supervision. But then I'm not sure that says... What the Constitution really means. I, I'm just trying to tie it together because there seems to be a lot of negativity around that word organizational.
I think we, I think we are circling the landing... I think our landing gear is down and we're about to land.
One wheel.
And we are gonna end, because I'm gonna make a motion to, to end this item in just a second. So, Member Lear?
Let me do that floating thing. Through acad, see what, here's what bugs me. Through acad, because you can't have organizational excellence. Again, it's a contradiction in terms. So what about academic excellence and organizational support?
Academic excellence, organizational... I, I think an organizational, organization can be... To be excellent.
Yeah, but what they do is just, I don't know. Okay, I'm just floating that out there. Because I didn't like the ac... I like academic excellence. I get that, that's the phrase of the year, so, okay. But organizational excellence just doesn't feel good. So I was thinking another word to go with organizational. But let's move on and go back.
Member Hymus?
Yeah, can, we call the question on this and vote?
Yeah, I, I think the light's closed out, so let's vote.
Can I, I, I would like to make an amendment?
I, I call the question.
We've already called the question.
Okay.
So...
Okay, I didn't hear that.
Yeah, hold, hold on that thought. We're gonna, no, because that was the only light, but she's gonna hold. Member, Member Wood?
Yes.
Member Straight?
Yes.
Member Reel? Member Reel?
No.
No. Member Norton?
Yes.
Member Lear? Member Hymus?
Yes.
Member Green? Member Earl? Member Davis?
Yes.
Member Klein?
No.
Member Booth?
Yes.
Member Bogus?
No.
All right, I'm gonna call this one out. It's closer. It's eight yeses, five noes, so that passes. The yeses are Booth, Davis, Earl.
You need to hear it, I think it fails. Doesn't it need two thirds vote?
I don't, no. It's a...
It's previous question, it requires two thirds.
Oh, no, there wasn't anyone else that had hands up. Did you, are you, are you objecting to that? Would you like a vote to call the question?
It is, yes.
Fair.
It requires two thirds for the previous question, which is what this is.
Okay, we will vote on calling the question. Calling the question, vote. Being clear, this is calling the question. Member Bogus?
No.
Member Booth? We're calling, so the question was called, the question was called. We didn't vote because there wasn't anyone left to speak.
I did, I, I wanted to make a motion, which means in order for the call the question to, to pass, it needs two thirds because I still, I, I had a motion.
Okay, and that was... Understood. And I apologize, Member Klein. I thought you withdrew that when you heard that the question had been called. So we went back and we are now voting on calling the question. So the question, what you're voting on is calling the question. Member Bogus? Member Booth?
Yes.
Member Klein?
No.
Member Davis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Earl?
Yes.
Member Green?
No.
Member Hymus?
Yes.
Member Lear?
Yes.
Member Norton?
Yes.
Member Reel?
Yes.
Member Straight?
Yes.
Member Wood?
Yes.
Member Moss, you weren't, okay, thanks. And I am a yes, so...
So that's 10 yeses.
So that's 10 yeses. That passes. We will now officially vote on the motion. We've called the question. This is a vote on the motion. The motion is to amend the vision, the statement to foster freedom through academic and organizational excellence for Utah Public Education.
To, a point of clarification.
Yes.
If this fails, then we move to Member Klein's initial motion?
No.
Yes.
Oh, yes. I'm sorry.
And then if that fails, what happens? We're left without anything. Okay.
Okay.
All right. One more, one more thought about it, just to make perhaps a friendly, instead of for Utah Public Education?
The question, it really has been called.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Member Wood?
Yes.
Member Straight?
Yes.
Member Reel? Member Norton?
No.
Member Lear?
No.
Member Hymus?
Yes.
Member Green?
No.
Member Earl?
Yes.
Member Davis?
How many are we at? Sounds weird, but I'm not...
I have a...
Yes, I guess.
Member Klein?
No.
Member Booth?
Yes.
Member Bogus?
No.
I'm a yes.
Did you get me?
Oh, did, were you, are you comfortable voting? You just came in. Would you like to vote yes or no?
I'm a no, only because it sounds to me like another mission. So I'm a no.
Okay, you're a no? Okay.
Don't get hung up on the mission.
Okay. That motion fails because it's tied. Our time is up. We need to move to the next item. We will need to...
We have to vote on the underlying motion.
Yeah, we have an underlying motion still right here.
I said we were cutting off. We are cutting off.
Let's just vote on this and then we're either starting fresh or we're...
All right.
I have some underlying motions.
All right, the motion on the floor?
Point of information.
Yes.
Why is that the underlining motion and not the very first one? Member Hymus moved the one on this paper.
I never got to move it. We did, we did the mission. We're talking this now.
You never moved.
Okay, is that clarified? All right. What we're voting on now is that the board approved the following vision statement, foster freedom through foundational academics first. Okay, this is what you're voting on. I'll start, I'll start with Member Bogus.
Yes.
Member Booth?
No.
Member Klein?
Yes.
Member Davis?
No.
Member Earl?
No.
Member Green?
No.
Member Hymus?
No.
Member Lear?
No.
Member Norton?
No.
Member Reel?
No.
Member Straight?
No.
Member Wood?
No.
Member Moss?
No.
10 noes, three yeses. The yeses are Bogus, Klein, and Green. That motion fails. We are moving on to our next agenda item.
Can I introduce briefly and then turn it to Superintendent Dixon? So just, just for background, we have Superintendent Dixon, Chief of Staff Young here to, to share with us an update on performance measures. This is not necessarily a specific part of this process. We are not here to review and vote or tweak these performance measures. But we felt it was a piece of the process of looking where we are and where we've come and how we're doing that fit in well with the process we're in of figuring out what we're all about. What's our mission, vision? Where do we want to go? What are our goals? So I just want to make really that part very clear. It's here because there's a conceptual tie between these performance measures and what we're doing. But we're not here to review, vote, tweak. So the legislature orders us to do certain things, performance measures, track them. And as Superintendent Dixon, Chief of Staff Young will explain, a lot of work has gone on to improving and revising those performance measures. And we'll be presenting those to the legislature as directed by the legislature. So that process is housed there. The reason it's here, again, we're going to hear some good things. I think a lot of great work that's been done in helping us assess how we're doing. And again, that's just a conceptual tie to this work. So I just want to set the table, make that clear. We're not voting here. We're not going to vote another time on whether to tweak these performance measures. They come down from the legislature. But I think it's very informative, and so I greatly appreciate the work's been done. The Chief of Staff Young kind of showed me, and I think others have had these conversations. A lot of things have been done to clarify, categorize, and in my view, shift toward a better understanding of outcomes. And so that's what I think is super helpful as we sort of do this work of strategic planning. So I hope that makes sense. Greatly appreciate all the work that's gone into this, and we look forward to hearing from it. Again, I think just our, the hat that we're wearing is, okay, how do I take this information and infuse it into this strategic planning process? That, for me, is the connection. But Superintendent Dixon might say it better. Thank you for, for both being here and for all the work.
Thank you, Chair Moss. You actually teed that up very well. I have, yeah, I did a great job. Thank you for that. We have about 30 slides that we're going to go through with you, and we don't intend to be PowerPointless, but we will use the slide deck just as a way for you to track where we're at. So Kelsey is driving for us, right? So we, just the four major components that we want to go over today, really, we'll kind of review as Chair Moss indicated, just the state performance measures. We want to give you a little bit of background about the why, where they're coming from, and what we need to do going forward. You've seen the reciprocal performance framework. That's been in front of you, and we've shared that with the legislature, and they've signed off on it. So that's been the foundational piece that we'll get into a little bit. We'll talk about draft performance measures for K-12 education, and you have those in a compendium that Chief of Staff Young will, will briefly detail a little bit for you. And we want to make sure you understand the timeline, where, where we headed. And so with that, we'll just get into the meat of it. And I know this is passive for a bit. If you have questions, we're happy to answer those at the end. But I would imagine that some of you, some of the questions you might have, you will see embedded in the slide deck as we progress. So if you have, we'll stop at the end and then just make sure we have a lot of time for you to discuss. Okay? So that's where we're headed. Now, the best part of all of this, in my opinion, is that there's no new data collection from our schools. Trying to be very mindful of the hard work that's, that has been done around reports and requirements work group. And we try to remind ourselves of that, as well as the legislature. Anytime anybody wants a survey or new data, it's more data collection. So the performance measures are based on the data we already have to make sure that we're not burdening our LEAs. All right, so what is this, what is this all about? Well, we've been working really closely, as Chair Moss stated, with legislative fiscal analysts, with the legislature, in trying to help them, help us, help them, in this reciprocal way of making sure that we have a systems approach to performance measures. And we'll get into that a little bit more. But we want to make sure that our taxpayers have transparency, that our policymakers have transparency, and that we're working together for one measurement system for the entire education system. So what are performance measures? Well, they're developed and approved, as Chair Moss indicated, by the legislative and executive branch. So unlike some of the things that we put forward in the strategic plan and other places, where you spend a lot of time on numbers and words and trying to get these right, we are taking an opportunity to inform the legislature and not necessarily do something apart from them. But we don't want it to be done to us either. So this is an opportunity to inform their work. The focus has shifted from a lot of combination of elements. I remember years ago, when I first heard about, we were tasked with performance measures, but they didn't really allow us to give input. So they were done to us. And they were just like this amalgam of everything. There were, you know, there were inputs and there were outputs, and there were like all sorts of things related to taxpayer dollars. But we didn't really have a way to say, what's the ROI? What's the return on the investment? What kind of outcomes are we getting? So they were sort of random. And we were very frustrated by being held to a set of standards that really didn't make sense for the system. And there are two types of performance measures, but we're going to focus on the line items. So these are the things that come to us. These are the long-term measures. And these are line items that we are given from the legislature. So that's what we will be detailing. All right. So what does it look like for K-12 education? Guess I could put on my glasses. That might help. I keep trying to look younger, even though I'm not feeling younger today. So to really assess the progress of our system towards our vision, right now, we've been, this is sort of this historical look, where we're, it's historical, but this is where we're at right now and what we're trying to improve on. So when we talk about measures, I know it can get very confusing because, and by confusing, I mean to everyone, the field, taxpayers, because they hear about measures, and we have a set. They're in an education elevated. And these are the things that were set by our board years ago and that were presented and accepted by the legislature. And remember, we started with 100% of our students being proficient, 100% of our students graduating. And then we did some metrics and, or created some metrics that said, we'll do X by this time. Then we also had our strategic goals and strategies, and, and that's what I just reported to you yesterday. We have action steps. So we're coming to you and saying, here's how we're getting to these goals, and here are the action steps that show we're meeting these strategies or not. And we hold ourselves accountable. We use heat maps. We use all sorts of things that we put before you. And then, thirdly, these line item measures that show progress towards specific budget line items. But when you put all those together, it feels a little bit like somebody's kitchen drawer, where you have your favorite utensils, and you're trying to find that one utensil sometimes that will get you exactly what you need. So again, trying to take all of those elements and then create something better. So our current challenge is, as I've mentioned, just using inputs and activities and outputs and outcomes. And sometimes when those are glossy, people clap and say, that sounds really great, but you don't really know if it's making a difference. And we want measures that, that clearly articulate a difference. We also haven't always had a clear articulation with our functions, just as you were struggling with mission and vision. And I love the conversation. It was nice to sit back and listen to it because that is a struggle. Like, what is our role? What do we do? How, how do we measure what we do in terms of how it impacts the system? And then what is the role of the LEAs as well in all of this? Like, how, what is their role? It was kind of clear specifically to their LEA, but then how is this a chain of how they impact the entire system based on the outcomes that they get in each of their LEAs? So you can see overall, this whole system that we have just lacks coherence. And therefore, we have truly been working on this over the course of a couple of years to get this right, just to make sure everybody's in agreement and at the table. So here are the actions that we've taken. And again, this has been over at least the last two years, and I feel like we've been talking about it for a long time, but we've taken these actions. So we sat down with all of our performance measures. And remember that we had over 180 existing performance measures. Who can keep track of that? Member Hymus, would you like to keep track of all that in your school? That's, that's a lot. And so we found that it was just so all over the place that we said, let's review all of these. So let's look at these that include our strategic plan, school improvement plan data sets, all of the data that we have, and then consider what is working and what isn't, and what could be improved upon. And then this was, we did this in order to then enter into the design phase. Like, what is our current state? Where are we trying to go? We also looked at some other states, and there were a few that had performance measures out there. Specifically, we looked at Texas, Arizona, and Florida. And the majority of these states use a pretty simple performance measure system, much like what we have in Education Elevated. Just some real standardized proficiency measures, graduation, graduation rates, et cetera. And then we also looked at some research on policy recommendations. For example, we looked at American Enterprise Institute. I know that's one of Chair Moss's favorites. And we appreciate an article that they put out that was called "The Numbers We Need: How the Right Metrics Could Improve K-12 Education." So those are some of the kinds of things that we look at to say, what are we not thinking of? How do we think about this differently? So I'm going to transition to Chief of Staff Young and just take us back a little bit to this performance framework and including timelines for progress. So she's going to drill down a little bit on what I just said.
Thank you. So Chief of Staff, Sarah Young, if we can have the next slide, Kelsey. So this progress towards this project actually even predates my time as Chief of Staff here at the agency. So we reach all the way back to August of 2019, which was when the Legislative Audit Subcommittee prioritized the audit of performance outcomes for K-12 education. So many of you may be familiar with the audits that have been coming out of OLAG, specific to looking at different aspects of K-12. And this was really kind of the kickoff of many of those audits. And their primary focus was trying to have a better understanding of those performance outcomes. In 2019, we also, in December, saw a performance audit on public education reporting requirements. And this was a key function within our overall design phase because there was really a focus on what is the agency doing to coordinate data gathering, and how can that increase efficiencies and decrease duplicative efforts? So that really fed into kind of an overview from our agency standpoint of what are we doing, and kind of prompting us to look at our existing systems and structures. The, that particular audit also did call out a desire for public education to look at school performance in addition to looking at school employment and trying to get a better sense of some of those metrics that may not always be as publicly promoted at the local level or the state level, but as a data set that we have access to. In 2020, we moved into a phase where, as per legislative requirements, the agency does present on performance measure outcomes each year. In the October 2020 presentation to Public Ed Appropriations, the agency at that time asked for a change in multiple measures, so 12 of the 63 that were in line item. That really caused a conversation within that legislative setting about, well, wait, if we're changing 12 of these, how good are these measures? And are they really getting at what we're seeking as legislators? At the time, USBE staff also expressed a desire to be able to make some modifications and do a revision that ultimately would hopefully be more comprehensive in meeting the needs of our legislative leaders. In August of 2021, we saw more performance audits coming out, specific to the Utah State Board of Education's internal governance. This particular audit stated that USBE should improve accountability for internal operations and streamline its reporting metrics. They also kind of referenced some of the work around the strategic plan and looking at outcomes within that space, as well as aligning to the state superintendent report, which was called out as another way that we are reporting, and that those pieces may not always fit together. In addition to 2021, we then moved into 2223, which is where we started to have kind of design outcomes and drafts that we were presenting to our legislative leaders. So we did present at Public Ed Appropriations on February 4, 2022, this initial framework. So we did present at Public Ed Appropriations on February 4, 2022, this initial framework. The goal of that framework was really to seek feedback from the legislators on whether or not this type of framework and design would meet their needs. And so they gave positive feedback, and we did move forward. We did bring the framework back again in August of 2022 to be able to review some of the changes we made based on feedback. And ultimately, again, in February of 2023, as part of the session, we did present at PEA, and that's also where we introduced some of the new components related to domains. Coming from that, we gave the exact same presentation in March of 2023 in Finance Committee that was presented, just to again, make sure that there was awareness here at the agency of kind of our progression related to this work, before we then moved into a heavier design phase with our staff. You'll see that there's some future dates coming, but Superintendent Dixon will cover that near the end of this presentation. So Superintendent, I'll turn it back to you to give the overview of the framework.
Thank you. Thank you, Sarah. So just taking us back, you've, again, you've seen this, but I want to re-ground us in this reciprocal, that is such a hard word to say on a Friday afternoon, reciprocal framework. And you'll recall, as I mentioned earlier, that the legislative body that looked at this and approved it, Public Ed Approbes, they were very supportive of this framework. And I'll just go through each component a little bit. When you look to the left in that first square on statewide outcomes and indicators, this is the piece where we're measuring progress on our big ideas, our big North Star, the whole population results. This kind of takes us back to Education Elevated and also brings in some new data sets. So we still look at proficiency and graduation rates and those things that we generally judge a whole population's success on, but adding in additional elements that we'll talk about in a minute. And then, as you look at system opportunity indicators, that's really where we measure the degree to which access and opportunity, as you just talked about in your mission and vision discussion, that it can be maybe predictable by socioeconomic status, our students with disabilities, students who are multilingual learners and other characteristics, and looking at what are the opportunities that we're creating, the conditions that we're creating for our kiddos, looking at course selection and enrollment patterns, and what are the data sets that we can use to help shift policy or make recommendations for funding, et cetera. So in the, in the nest of scaling up and down, we're always talking about our roles. Again, what is the role of us building capacity and providing support? What does that look like at the local level and at the school level? So as you look at each one of these levels, when we talk about our capacity and support, we're really talking about measuring the degree to which we are creating the conditions for student success. And I love that you brought that into the, into the conversation earlier, because that is something that we can measure. So that includes like creating essential conditions for ensuring opportunity and agency effectiveness and efficiency. And that's, could be something like the way we're administering federal and state grants, and when we have our audits, are we, are we having findings or not? Do we have internal controls in place that mitigate risk? Those are the kinds of things we might look at, and things like teacher professional learning and educator preparation programs, and key performance indicators on some of the specific operational outcomes that we have. When we talk about local capacity and support, I'm really trying to breathe between each one of these, by the way. When we talk about local capacity and support, we're really talking about measuring the degree to which our LEAs and school boards are, how they're creating the conditions for student success. So for example, do all students have access to reasonably experienced, qualified, effective educators across the schools? Excuse me. What are the student outcomes for students engaging in advanced coursework? And looking at teacher and administrator average pay, what does that look like from LEA to LEA or from school to school? When we get down to school quality, it's, we're really talking about measuring the degree to which schools are meeting student needs and enabling student success. So student attendance, teacher engagement data, a number of students in the school who are proficiency and literacy, et cetera. So that's, that kind of nested approach to all of the various roles and how each set creates conditions and is able to measure the kind of outcomes that we're getting and responsible for. And, you know, when you look at, when you look at this framework and the solutions therein, this is a way to really align systemically all those efforts to outputs and outcomes instead of having activities and inputs and a lot of things that it's nice to know, but it really doesn't get to the outcomes. This is a way to align all of those efforts. It also allows us to really clearly develop those indicators that address the operational outcomes at our level and at the local level. Like, when we're having those conversations about, well, who really influenced this? Isn't it great if we all influence it, but what is our role in that? And how can we get really clear about it? And that also demonstrates alignment with existing responsibilities across, across the system, and that in itself creates coherence. So we see this framework as a solution to some of those things that we've all grappled with and had, been having conversations about over time.
So I'd just like to highlight quickly some of the existing USBE data sets that were considered as part of this development effort. You'll see that in the design phase, we took all of our existing measures in Education Elevated, the USBE Strategic Plan, and the existing legislative performance measures to look for alignment, coherence, and redundancy. It was important for our agency to begin with these measures, noting they are already data systems that we have in place. Not only does this eliminate potential costs for a new performance measure system, but also allows us to continue the great work that has already been started by Representative Pulsofer and the Reports and Requirements Task Force to really reduce those reporting requirements at the LEA and school level. In addition to that, you'll note that the agency looked at the continuous improvement data. So this is a data set that actually Finance Committee heard about today, related to some work in the grants management system to really build into a comprehensive needs assessment to again, reduce a requirement for LEAs to do a needs assessment for every single grant they're doing, but instead to have one. And so if they're doing a needs assessment in terms of qualifications for data, we wanted to see an alignment between what those measures were and ultimately what was being reported in a performance measure system. In addition to that, we did note that the legislature had invested in some additional infrastructure to gather experiential data, such as the Educator Engagement and Exit Survey and School Climate Survey. So we did look at incorporating some of those data sets to elevate the voice of our community and really take the next step in reporting the current status of the system. In addition to that, I also just like to highlight the domains. So this is in addition to the framework. We noticed that the framework categories are great, but we also wanted to draw alignment across the different framework categories. So if we're reporting something at a statewide level, how are we also reporting that at a local level and a school level? And so you'll see that those domains are represented here in terms of measuring student outcomes, experiential data, human capital in the system, systems operations, demographics, and finance. So in terms of, if we can go to the next slide, I'd just like to give a high level of the PDF that you have available to you in the backup. So I appreciate that the PDF is maybe not the most reader-friendly, and we do have a solution for that. So of those 36 pages of Excel spreadsheet, I'm just going to give a quick overview of what types of measures you can see within each of the reciprocal performance framework categories in terms of capturing the overall vision. So first and foremost, we have our statewide outcomes and indicators. In this section, you'll see we do have reporting related to enrollment trends, because that is such a big factor in terms of how K-12 education receives the majority of our funding. In addition to that, we do have graduation rate, as well as the state readiness of coursework outcome data. So again, this is the percentage of our students who are participating in concurrent enrollment, APIB, and CTE completer pathways, and something we've always reported on related to Ed Elevated. In addition to that, we do have the state assessment data outcomes. I've captured that as a broad category, but it does represent for all the different aspects of this data assessment, from math, English, language arts, and science, each called out specifically by their individual assessment, as well as some of the additional assessments given related to early literacy, early mathematics, as well as kindergarten readiness. Addition to that, we do have the state NAP scores. So this was a component the legislature had felt strongly about in the initiation of performance measures, giving them kind of an outside point of view about how do our reporting related to our state assessments then reflect in terms of a more national assessment related to the readiness of our students? And then in addition to that, you see, we also have educator mentor data. This is information that does come from the Teacher Engagement Survey or the Educator Engagement Survey that's issued every two years. And so we thought it was important to report out on how many of our teachers have access to a mentor and the success of that experience, noting it is also a key policy initiative and funding request that we see repeatedly coming from the agency. So we wanted to have a measure to be able to help us track where we are in terms of when we receive resources, what the outcome looks like. In addition to that, we have our system opportunity indicators. You'll see here that we have state early learning assessment data. So we did move our early learning space into systems opportunity to really help frame, are we setting students up for success? And what do we see those needs, knowing those kids will be with us in the system for the next 11 to 12 years, depending on when they start school? We do have a call out related to the mental health needs for six through 12. This is a data set that we see being used very regularly by individuals who are working on Safe UT, as well as some of the mental health components and systems, such as the recent legislation related to social media and our students. So we wanted to again, just have a measure that spoke to that being a priority of many of our policymakers. In addition, we have attendance expulsion and suspension state data. This is really meant to get at, you know, the focus on our students have access to really robust learning experiences when they're in school. And so that if they're not in school, that we do see kind of a disruption in that learning opportunity, and how is that disruption potentially being captured through this existing data set? Lastly, we do have both the percent of Utah teachers who are professionally qualified for their assignment by licensing category, as well as, we're being a little bold here, the number of licenses recommended and the percent of new educators working in Utah public schools from our Utah Institutes of Higher Education. This data set really is designed to get at the teacher potential, like the hiring challenges that are happening related to maybe not having enough teachers to bring into the classroom. So we wanted to bring transparency and alignment with another legislative funding request related to the Grow Your Own and how those pieces could complement each other.
And Sarah, a good example of that was shared in Standards and Assessment today. Dr. Height shared some of the data that would be used as a performance measure, for those of you that were in that committee.
Okay. So next in our category, we have USBE capacity and support. We do have USBE financial transactions, just to demonstrate that kind of key performance indicator of some of the value add of the operational side of the agency. We also have USBE staff and supervisor average salary and turnover. That is meant to mirror what's happening in reporting at the LEA level, just to be able to give kind of a sense related to, again, some of the agency requests for market rate adjustments and some of the reporting we've seen in our audits related to concern about turnover. In addition to that, we have compliance with federal and state requirements. So this is going to be specific to, again, some of our existing measures related to Carson Smith, as well as how we're supporting LEAs and meeting those requirements. And then we are gathering measures related to the number of educators being supported through CTE, teaching and learning, and special education, through the programs that this, and training opportunities that this agency specifically offers. Finally, we do have measures for the existing four goals of the USBE Strategic Plan to incorporate those components within to the overall reporting for this system. I've got two more, and I know they're the biggest, so I'm going to try and go as quickly as possible. So this is going to be our LEA component. So you'll see, again, we have enrollment trends. We think it's really important that we continue to track those enrollment trends, again, noting that that's a huge financial driver in terms of what access those LEAs have to state and potentially federal dollars. We have FTE for licensed and classified staff. I will note, classified staff was specifically requested from the field in terms of making sure that we're representing for that. I think there was some concern out of the recent session that those classified staff weren't necessarily recognized for the roles they play within our system, and this gives us an opportunity to call that out. This one is, you shouldn't have favorites in performance measures, but I do. And it is the percent of total state restricted funding passed through to LEAs. Now, you might be like, that's a boring one, but let me tell you why it's not. So one of the things that we always hear, both when we're up, talking with legislators and to when we're talking with the field, is that it can be really challenging to apply for all of the programs that are out there, and that that's a pretty massive administrative burden. But how do you capture that burden? So this is our way of capturing it. So we're looking at taking the total amount of state restricted funds that could be passed through to an LEA and measuring it versus how much they're actually receiving. So for us, it gives us a way to look at, especially our rural and charter school communities, to say what type of administrative burdens are being placed on you, and how is that being reflected in your access to resources in terms of educating kids? In addition to that, we have components related to salaries, related to administrators and teachers, noting, again, that has been some legislative priorities in previous sessions. We do have, again, the percent of LEA teachers and their qualifications and educator licensing. We do get down to average LEA educator in special education, years of experience. We did call those two out separately, because we noticed there's a discrepancy between those two populations. And then, again, total percent of that state restricted funding, and LEA state assessment data, attendance data, climate, educator engagement, and incident data. So we kind of captured all of that in the experience piece. Kelsey, I have one more. So this is school quality. Again, we're looking at enrollment trends. I'll note at the school level, the enrollment trends piece does also provide a reflection related to some of the recent conversations around school closures. We feel like there could be more awareness in the community if we had a clear, more straightforward reporting metric that was consistent. School state assessment outcomes, readiness coursework, four-year graduation rates, and suspension and student incident data to capture school level. Last but not least, we do have some performance measures that don't necessarily fall into one of these categories. And so I'll just call out that we do have two additional sections that come at the end of the spreadsheet. One is for provider outputs. So these are specific programs like IC, as well as POPs, that do provide where USBE is a pass-through to providing them funding related to services they provide. We know it's important for the legislature to know how many students and teachers they're serving, but we wanted to call that out as not necessarily work that the agency is doing, but that we are monitoring in terms of outcomes. We also have program-specific outputs and outcomes. This captures dual-language immersion, digital teaching and learning, intergenerational poverty, and some of the other programs that do have specific measure requirements in code. And so we again, put those separate, because we would like the legislature to potentially consider whether all of those need to continue to be measured, or if our new system really helps to address what they're looking for from a comprehensive standpoint, and that some of those may not be as necessary to them moving forward. Last but not least, we do note that we do, are responsible as an agency for three other sets of performance measures. And you'll see those listed on the screen for some of the agencies that you, as the state board, work with and kind of have governance and oversight for. We did not ask USDB, the charter schools, or the RESSAs to be involved in this first round, mainly because we just wanted to kind of get to a space where we had the USBE house in order, before we could then say, okay, this is what the legislature has decided to approve and move forward with, so that it gives them a clearer vision of what types of components they may want to choose to iterate from, from our existing approved measures, to then hopefully streamline and expedite that process for them.
So kudos to Chief of Staff Young for modeling best practice as an educator using multiple modalities. For those of you that love spreadsheets and got lost in all of the numbers and the columns, and it brought you joy, awesome. and it brought you joy, awesome. For those of you that prefer words in a summary form, awesome. So hopefully there was something in either the spreadsheet form or those slides that help you understand what we're talking about now when we talk about performance measures and the intent to really provide a seamless opportunity to use the data we have at hand to create a coherent system of measuring outcomes. So we have a little timeline for you, just to show you next steps. As you look at where we're at, we're here in the end of summer. I guess we really call this fall when we're into September, although it feels like summer. So we've been working with experts to develop the majors and the targets and all the domains that we just shared with you. And we reviewed the draft with the reporting requirements task force and got a favorable recommendation. We-ish.
Yeah, so we're actually still working on getting on that agenda.
Okay. My bad, sir. Take note of that.
It's in our court.
Okay.
We've got to schedule the next meeting, which is going to come shortly.
Okay. So just correction on that. I was thinking that earlier this spring, you kind of went over it, but I think that was the reciprocal framework.
Yes, we did.
Just the framework.
We'd like to bring them back.
All right. So taking the draft to the reporting task force. And then also, again, reviewing the draft with Superintendent Charter Directors and Business Administrators. And, you know, we've been getting their input along the way, but wanting to make sure that they see this whole final concept. And then here we are in September, presenting it to you, and our target for the Public Education Appropriations Committee is October. That we are on their agenda for the October meeting to present these. So that's kind of the overview of where we're at and where we're headed. And I think that brings us to the end. So thank you for indulging us as we tell the story of looking back and looking forward with performance measures, and we're really excited about the way ahead. And you, as board members, have engaged and driven a lot of that conversation to help shape it to what it is today. So thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. If I could just do a little bit of a... That's a heck of a lot of work, you know, and a lot of, a million moving pieces brought into a coherent picture of how we tell how we're doing and then how we're doing. So there's a ton in there. Questions, comments? Again, we're not here to, you know, revise or tweak or wordsmith, but there's a lot in there that I think informs what we do as we think about strategic planning, right? So we can, you know, if you have questions about it in terms of the process per se as we report and take this to the legislature, or questions about how all this work might inform what we're doing in our strategic planning process, questions, comments? We've got a few minutes. Member Davis?
Sometimes I hate that these are public meetings because my, I'm showing my ignorance, but I think a lot of words were just said and a lot on the screen to see. And I don't want to miss the key point. So I'm just saying, what is the key takeaway here? What is the so what of all this? Is it because in code there are 128 performance measures, and we are going to suggest to the legislature that they streamline it down into an achievable, understandable framework? Is that the key takeaway from this? Or is this just all of those performance measures we're going to report on, and here's all the categories, and we're going to do it?
That's a, it's a really important question, thank you, because it really distills down to coherence in the system, number one. I mean, that's what we've been missing. We've had all these disparate sets of indicators and measurements, and some were inputs, outputs. So what are the true outcomes that we want to measure? Not just for the line items that are required, but it gives us an opportunity to bring everything into coherence, looking from, again, our role, the LEA role, the school level. And, you know, heaven forbid, it might just actually help steer legislation towards the outcomes that we're looking for. So that's part of it. That's sort of the overview of it, but then there are some ancillary reasons behind it as well.
Yes. So what we've actually done is, as part of this, we're recommending the elimination of several performance measures. And instead, we're trying to design a system that answers people's questions in one space as opposed to many spaces. So one of our tracking efforts is we looked at where are all of these reported? And I can tell you, it is all over the place, like, not even like within the, like, two clicks of each other on the website. We're talking like six to eight, to be able to move from one data set to another to another. And so we're really trying to create something that is more comprehensive. To your question, if this is something that the legislature decides to move forward with, we would be interested in translating this into like the interactive dashboard that allows people to say, like, I'm really interested in graduation, click. It's like, okay, great, where's my LEA? Click. Okay. What does that LEA look like, you know, but maybe for my school as compared to those other schools? Now, are there mechanisms for that currently? There are, but they live in different dashboards across our reporting mechanisms. And so we would look to reduce that redundancy and really streamline into a single place that, to be honest, hopefully not only our policymakers, but that our parents see as valuable related to understanding, if I choose this school for my child, how does that compare to the neighborhood school down the street? Which, again, we have a school comparison tool, but it doesn't draw from all of these data sets, and we think that having that additional transparency will help.
Chair, may I summarize in one sentence what I think I heard? So what I think I'm hearing is that we are doing all of this for public practitioner and policymaker ease of use and transparency. I see nods. Yay. Okay.
That's our new mission statement, right?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Well, it's just so, your brain takes lots of, you know, side trips when you listen to a long presentation. I really appreciate your patience with my questions. Thank you.
Number one?
Probably similar need to clarify in my own brain. So you said no new data, which means all of this is what are outside the system is doing, and we're just trying to bring it in from disparate locations and bring it into a central location. In the end, when we look at all of this and we bring it all together, do we hope that it will impact policy, that it will impact like our literacy program? We know we have low rates, we're working as a system from A to Z to make that work. We'll see other areas where that same push might be able to happen instead of all these. I've noticed with the last two months, contracts, wow, the legislature makes us spend a lot of money on programs that may or may not be effective in the end. And hopefully this will focus us better.
That was really well said, and I'll just jump on your literacy example. So when Dr. Thronson, who's here with us, is looking at, is the initiative working or not, she's not just looking at Acadian's data. You know, she's pulling in the strength of coaching in a particular school, the kind of professional learning that they've had, how many educators have been through letters, what are the, what kind of support are the pair of educators getting? Like, looking at all of these factors and trying to determine what are the elements that resulted in a particular outcome? And that's, I love that you use that example because that's a microcosm of what we're trying to say in terms of, you take all these data sets to say, what is it that makes a difference? Is making a difference in the school, is making a difference in the system? How do we replicate that, scale it up, ask for resources? So you summarized it very well. I think we've just found our two champions in the summaries of you and Member Davis. So well stated.
I will also just add, so we're not unique as an agency in the fact that we have performance measures. All the state agencies do. And the goal of building out that system from what's been reported by both LFA and the Governor's Office of Planning and Budget is, to your point, to be able to provide the relevant data about the overall health of the system to our policymakers, so that when they're saying, what are the needs, they're not just relying on maybe what they've heard from independent constituents, but that they do have a robust data set to be able to say, what does that look like? And then how can I, as a policymaker, work with the state board to be able to figure out solutions? So we're going to be more evidence-based.
I have a question.
Vice to your heart, and then, sorry, who's that online? Is that Member Klein? Okay. Got you.
Yes.
I guess, I, from what I hear, all agencies have to do this. When we pull all of our measures together, I'm overwhelmed almost by the data. My next thought goes to, I don't want to reinvent the wheel for our strategic plan. I want to pull from the data that we have at hand. I have no interest in adding to that list. I'm only interested in subtracting and clarifying and that kind of thing. So I, you know, I guess it's because of our agenda today, but my initial reaction is, let's use the information we have to make good decisions, and let's try to make that go together. Do you think, the question is, do you think that that, do you see an issue with that or a problem if we were to go down that road for measures for our strategic plan? Would that be useful? Okay.
So yes, and ideally, if whatever the board decides related to your strategic plan and your goals, we would then adjust what those strategic plan measures would look like to align with that vision. And so really, we see this as an opportunity to be more coherent related to the reporting and not needing to have one report for the agency, one report on the strategic plan, and one report for the legislature, that we could just have one comprehensively that addresses those needs.
I am very excited about that, and now I feel kind of guilty for complaining about having two plans that I had to pull data from. I mean, you have hundreds of data points and data measures, and it's just astounding the data we have at hand. I think it's a huge Herculean task to pull it all together and make it, we keep using the word coherent, but, I mean, even just being presented with it was quite an experience. So thank you. We've got a lot of good information at our fingertips. It also makes me think of that data-rich, information-poor. We need to make sure that we are able to use the data, or else there's no point in having it.
Member Klein?
To me, this sounds just like the accountability redesign that we, as a board, rejected last November. How is this different?
So the redesign, as I understand, and maybe Vice to your heart can weigh in, I think that had some policy changes in mind, or the way of measuring accountability, where this is, I think, a systematizing and bringing coherence to measures that the legislature have asked us to track, but we're pulling it together in a much usable way, a much more usable way, without making specific recommendations for assessment, which the other task force did. Am I getting that right? I mean, this isn't so much a policy recommendation as just fine-tuning how we gather useful data.
As a, yeah.
Well, I might have a better answer. She was on that.
I was on that. And the legislature was going down a path where they wanted to figure out a way to use data to make an evaluative or make, to draw some conclusions. What I see this as more of a, almost a data library, like organizing the information that we have and clarifying what we have, whereas the accountability framework, quite frankly, was something that would be in policy and would actually be done with, you know, some cooperation, but really, it's a mandate. It's done to us, where this is us looking internally at what we have and making sense of it so that we make good decisions, I think, is, that's my, I see a real difference between the use of the data with the accountability framework. I mean, it's obviously, the parallel is that it's the data, but it's for different purposes. That's my interpretation.
I would just add, if I may, Member Klein, that I would have to go back and listen to the conversation again, to be precise, but I'm reflecting on, it wasn't so much a rejection, the board just took no action on the accountability redesign recommendations. And I'm recalling some of the conversation, not all, but some was based on sort of the then what? If we don't do what we're already doing, and a lack of clarity about how everything was connected. But I will go back and listen so I can be more precise. Did that, did all of us, I know we all attempted to answer your question, but did we get there, ma'am?
Well, I think it sounds like the implementation of the accountability redesign bypassing the policymaking process essentially. And the data is the accountability. So whether we call it, regardless of whether we call it transparency, the data is what creates the accountability.
Go ahead. So let me just ask some clarifying questions. Almost all of this, if I'm not wrong, is already required by the legislature. They require it, and they're requiring it to be reported. And so I think this is consolidating and maybe putting it into a better organization, because we like that word, organization excellence. Anyways, it's trying to put it into an organization because it has to be presented and maybe even asking to consolidate those into more cohesive roles. I don't know if that, at least that's the way I kind of understood it. So we're going to have to report out next month regardless.
Yes.
So. And Member Klein, I would just...
What you've described is, sounds like accountability to me.
Well, if I may, Ms. Superintendent Dixon, it is an accountability to us as the board. The accountability system, when we're talking about current school accountability, that's holding the school's accountability. This is holding us accountable from the legislature. So yes, they're both accountability systems, and it would be nice for them to be connected. I think that was laid out in the accountability redesign. How can we use some different and additional measures in addition to what has been traditional in legislation? So hopefully that helps. Yes, they're both accountability.
Yes. It sounds like you're supermune, but I said, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Other questions? I have, well, I would ask this offline, but it might be helpful, and I don't know if you can answer it all. I'm just curious, in the formal process of doing all this organization, if anything jumped out at you in terms of indicators, you know, I mean, again, this is your job and you're doing it, and it's going to the legislature, and I think it's a job well done. And then there's a question of how do we use that in sort of our own thinking as we do strategic planning? And so I'm not asking for recommendations, policy suggestions, just if you saw anything in there that jumped out about the interplay between different performance measurables or something that said, huh, that tells me something about how we're doing that I didn't know? Anything like that that you're able to share? And I don't, I won't be, feel bad if you say that's a bit of an ambush.
So Chief of Staff Young, I would say, I actually, and I don't know if it helps this board in terms of like the strategic planning element, but I will say, one of the things that jumped out at me was the fact that as we were going through this, most of our LEAs have a local strategic plan. They have their own set of measures, their own set of potential indicators that they're looking at, and there's a lot of opportunity for coherence in that space. I don't know about you, but sometimes it can be really frustrating when you feel like there's multiple expectations, and you're like, I don't know how to meet all of these. And so we, as a state, have never necessarily said, like, outside of, well, we have education elevated, and then we have these performance measures, and we have these reports we're asking LEAs to complete. The thing... The thing that jumped out at me was that this is an opportunity to say this, like, this is the dataset that, as an LEA, we're looking at in relationship to the state data. And I think that that has incredible potential to be able to also help inform future work for LEAs in terms of their strategic plans, to say, okay, which of these elements are our strengths? Which are these elements do we choose to work on at the local level? And how do we then see those metrics feed ultimately improvements to the overall system?
Very cool. Well, thank you. Other questions, comments? Well, we could actually conclude early, I guess. Parish the thought, it doesn't quite balance out, but you know, it's something. Well, thank you. I think this is a heck of a lot of work and great, and I saw this, I don't, I just kind of mentioned this, I'm just speaking as a board member, but when Chief of Staff Young showed me this, she wasn't really hyping so much that there were more outcomes than inputs, but that just kind of leaped out as we were looking at what used to be and how it was consolidated, organized. I just think it gives a lot better picture of the ultimate target that we're all trying to hit. And so thank you. As we now talk about where we're trying to go, you know, we can all follow up individually about how to use the measures, right, and how to dig in there, and that might inform our thoughts about where we've come and where we're going. And I'll just say, we're always torn between, you know, some who say, oh, we're failing, and others who's pointing out, we're doing amazing stuff. And so, you know, the process of strategic planning, it's me as one of 15, is you look at where you've come, and then how do you take the next level up? And this, I think, is just hugely helpful in that process, because we're doing amazing things. And I've said a million times how glad I am that when the world fell apart, my kids were in Utah. I mean, it was, you know, just a great place to be with people that had their heads on straight, were working hard, doing the right things for kids. And so we did a lot of good stuff. And then, as a healthy organization, we're always looking at, okay, that's awesome, how do we go better, right? And measurement is a big part of that. So I just think this is a great tool for us to use as policymakers. You know, how is our policy helping advance those goals? We're not in the classroom, I mean, people are in the classroom in their own capacity, but how's our policy discussion orient us toward improvement in how do those performance measures that we already have help us know where to go next? So rambling way of saying thank you. I think it's hugely useful for us as policymakers in trying to make good decisions. Sorry.
No, I guess my only other question to answer later is, I would like to hear about ways that the board can support this work and support you in doing this work, and what you need from the board in order to realize the goals. So just in the future, those are things that I would be interested in hearing, how to support that work, because I think it's valuable. Thank you.
I will do it.
We'll be there.
Yes.
You'll be there. All right, if that's it, any final motion?
I move that we adjourn.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Well, thank you all, and we will come back for the next step. We took a vote today, we took some action, and we got educated, so we're moving, we're moving forward. Have a great weekend.